Hello, welcome to our Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three special voting meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Feig, can you please take roll call?
Dr. Anne Herring?
Present.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Jason Mill?
Happy to be here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter? Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor, Tom Warner, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller, superintendent, Diane Squirtavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. We will not be amending the agenda tonight, but Dr. Haller would like to say something.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. First, I'd like to recognize that we have a number of members from the Jacksonwald staff here with us this evening, so thank you for coming and joining us. And I'd also just like to take a moment just to thank the Exeter Township School District staff for a great start of the beginning of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And lastly, I'd like to take this opportunity to share information with our community about the ongoing transportation challenges that Exeter is facing due to the national bus driver shortage. For many in our community at this time, transportation has thankfully stabilized during the first couple of weeks of school. However, we also know that there needs to be still many changes made, particularly when looking at the walkability of locations of some of our stops. Currently, we are prioritizing those changes for those stops and working to improve the timing of buses that may be running behind schedule consistently. As you hear during this meeting tonight, the special voting agenda, there is a motion to begin to outsource routes to help solve some of these issues. In the meantime, we will continue to work with, work through the communication we are receiving and very much appreciate our families' patience as we address your concerns. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Haller. No one has signed up for comment, so we're going to move straight to Education Committee. Dr. Battler?
Thank you, Dr. Herring. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following list of staff conferences.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
This time I'm on the right one and Bob's on the wrong. It's okay. I was on the wrong one last time. Okay, um, this has to be amended. How do I amend that exactly? Sorry.
Yeah, you're talking about dollar amounts?
Yes.
So, uh, my recommendation would be to, for a motion on the table, to amend from dollar amount A to dollar amount B, get a second discussion, uh, and then a vote on the amendment itself, and then you vote after that on the action.
Okay. I would like to amend, um, B, getting started with G O's virtual, virtual training for all K to two classroom teachers, et cetera. For fifty-one staff members, it's a total of twelve hundred and fifty dollars, not eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, we have a motion to amend the amount from eleven twenty-five to twelve fifty. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following virtual training. Getting started with G O's virtual training for all K to two classroom teachers, K to four reading intervention specialists, K to four E S L teachers, K to two special education teachers, and K to four special education supervisor, fifty-one staff members for a total of twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Could someone explain what G O's are?
Yep, here comes Becky Bush. She can.
On cue, wasn't planned.
So, G O's are an aligned text, and when I say aligned text, they are a tool that we will be using with our phonics instruction. They are aligned to our foundations instruction, which is our explicit systematic phonics. When we are using texts in our classroom, we want to make sure that whatever the students are learning in their phonics instruction, they have the opportunity to apply as well in their reading to strengthen all of our phonics instruction. Right now, our teachers have access to the leveled texts, which are also a very strong tool, but they need to be used at the right time, just like these G O's or these aligned texts. So, um, by adding these G O's and this G O's training, we will be strengthening our phonics instruction.
So, I see the training here. Is the software or the textbooks already purchased, or is that something we'll be seeing?
That is something that was approved last year, so the teachers currently have all of these resources, K through two, every classroom teacher. And we were giving them the opportunity to work within them and just kind of explore them, get to know how they can be used, and now we would be providing this training to support the implementation.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Becky. Any other?
Yeah, what, what's the why here? Why are we doing this? Is this a repeat kind of a thing? Is this a result of the, uh, report that you gave about the reading scores? What's, what's the backstory?
I'll let, I'll let Becky answer that. So, when we are working with students in phonics instruction and they are getting the opportunity to practice with those words, to strengthen that instruction, we need to have somewhere they can apply that immediately. So, what we noticed with students and, you know, with the data that we shared at the end of the last school year, some of our students struggle to segment and blend because they don't have enough opportunities to practice and repeat that practice. So, these G O's were purchased to give that repetition to students so that they can always apply what they're learning in what they're doing. And our hopes are, yes, that when you look at the core curriculum, this will strengthen it. And hopefully, as we're working through this, we'll be continuing to provide that professional development so that we can sustain that growth.
You have a way of measuring the effectiveness of this?
Yes. So, right now, we're using the Acadians Universal Screeners. And as we are looking at the students in the fall, winter, and the spring benchmarks, we can compare this year's scores to last year's scores, as well as we give foundations units tests. These are aligned directly to foundations, so we can also be comparing the data from the end of the unit tests from last year to this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I could just add to that, that was one of the, the big pushes for why we looked at the calendar and the way that we looked at the calendar, uh, because we, we actually created the assessment map first. So, that way, we could look at when we were benchmarking students. And data's only good if you look at it and you discuss it and the teachers have an opportunity to then make changes to their instruction. And it can't be a, a one-cycle opportunity because we know that students look different from year to year. So, if we want our teachers to have the best opportunity to instruct students where they are and to make progress, then we need to make sure that the teachers have the correct assessments to be able to evaluate students and, and their instructional needs and then develop a plan to meet those students' needs and then provide them the resources that they need to meet those students' needs. And all of those things, they, they take time, and the teachers need to collaborate together. So, I, I'd like to take this opportunity to once again thank the board for their support of the calendar because we know it was an adjustment by adding in some of the days, particularly the half-days. But that is, that is the purpose for that and why we needed that time.
Okay, if no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
That's all for the Education Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Finance Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Mall?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Herring. I'm going to actually break the bus routes conversation into three separate items here for discussing, just in case anyone has any specific questions. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following bus routes. Item one, bus transportation for special education routes contracted through B C I U.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do. Uh, what is the cost of this? Because it says there's no regular monthly cost to the district from the B C I U. However, we're seeing a reduction in transportation reimbursement, so do we know, uh, you know, what that'll cost us in the long run?
Between, it depends on the number of runs, the number of students, but it'd probably be between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand. The I U has to transport, uh, special education students for special needs. If the district cannot do it, we've been doing this before, but we just don't have the drivers to. But the state requires them to be transported, not billed to the district at the year, and then at the end of the year, they take it through a deduct. But the state pays them directly, but deducts it from our, um, state allotment.
So, that can vary then from month to month based on the amount of runs?
Amount of runs and number of kids.
And we won't know the cost outcome of that until the year's over?
That's what I'm saying, probably between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand. It, it is a cost to us, but it's actually paid by the state and then they deduct.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, if no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following bus routes. Item number two, transportation to P A L program contracted through Atlas Transportation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following bus routes. Item number three, provide busing to five antedum students to non-public schools.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, go ahead. Nope, please.
I was just going to ask, is that credit, um, does that cover what we are, how much it's going to cost us to do this, or?
It's actually a, a deduct per student, so it's, I think we're at two hundred and eighty-five or something like that, so they're wanting to be billed the lesser, or get subtracted out, give us a credit to what we've already approved. Back in August, the board approved the I U for doing those routes, uh, but it seems like the antedum, their short drivers, actually the I U short drivers for antedum runs, so districts all the time share services, but then they bill each other. But since you already approved the contract before, I wanted to put that on, that we're getting a credit.
Sorry, so we're, so we're already going to these non-public schools anyway?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Schaefer?
Thank you, Dr. Herring. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following resignations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Hey, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following appointments. I'm going to take out guest teachers, so certified staff, support staff, extracurricular staff, and certified substitutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following appointments under guest teachers. Items one through four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following transfers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following change of status.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following leave of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item F, it is recommend the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following classroom move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item G, it's recommend the Board of School Directors approves, approves the attached list of course requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That is it for personnel tonight. Thank you very much. No one has signed up for public comments. So, if there's no objection, the special voting meeting is adjourned and will now begin our Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Exeter Township School District Committee of a Whole Meeting. Mr. Feig, can you please take roll call?
Dr. Anne Herring?
Present.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Jason Mill?
Still happy to be here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter? Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson? All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anyone have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the August first, two thousand and twenty-three special voting meeting, as well as Board Committee of a Whole Meeting and August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three board voting meeting? There's no discussion. We will not be amending the agenda, so we'll go to Education Committee. Dr. Battler?
Thank you, Dr. Herring. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following list of staff conferences. If there's no questions, we can move on to item B. It is reported that the following field trips within the sixty-mile radius have been approved. Jacksonwald Elementary second-grade classes traveling to the Exeter Community Library for a visit on September twenty-eighth. Senior high's, uh, eleventh and twelfth grade literature and art classes traveling to the Renaissance Fair. Junior and senior high music students traveling to the Renaissance Fair to perform. Owatton Creek's Elementary second-grade classes traveling to the Exeter Community Library for a visit. And Lorraine's second-grade classes traveling to the Exeter Community Library for a visit. So, there's no discussions, moving on. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the early graduation request in January, two thousand and twenty-four for the following student, eight-six-four-two-three-two-four, per District Policy two-seventeen. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of seventy-five annual Wilson Fun Hub subscriptions for K to two classroom teachers, K to four reading intervention, intervention specialists, K to six E S L teachers, K to six special education teachers, and the Supervisor of Literacy in E S L. It's ninety-five dollars each for a total of seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Underneath it explains what it does. Any discussion?
Just, just one question, if I may. How, how does, how do these, or this whole program, how does that work with what we've already approved at the other meeting?
Ms. Becky Bush.
Hi again. Um, so, in the past, we've had Fun Hub as a free subscription. So, our teachers have been using it and using it and using it, and what it does is it supports that foundations that they are using for their explicit and systematic phonics. And then, as you can see, their interactivities have sound cards, letter-keyword, um, sound cards. There are, um, they can make words on there. They can send videos or use videos to help support the homeschool connection. So, up until now, it has been free. And this year, that Wilson language decided that they would start charging for it. And when our subscriptions ended, the teachers lost all access to those materials that have been supporting their instruction for the last two and a half years. So, by getting that back, we'll be able to continue to support the teachers and the students in whole and small group instruction, and by, um, also including the special education and the reading and intervention team, we'll be able to continue coordinating efforts so that when we're seeing those kids in small group for those interventions, we can give them, um, the same tools and the same ability to use the resources and that common language.
Thank you. How, how will that, or will it interact at all with what we've already approved?
So, the Fun Hub is part of Wilson Language. That is the, the foundations program and the G O's, which are going to then provide that resource so that teacher, that the students can apply, um, their learning. They will connect because what they're seeing and using for repeated practice, um, well, they'll, they'll then be able to apply it. So, it all works together, actually, in one really nice, um, unit.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fiddler, if you, oh, if you, you knew I was going to talk about this piece, right? So, if you recall in other conversations, thirty seconds or less, so I promise, we've talked about that through line between regular education and special education curriculum and methodology, and that the closer you can keep the language of instruction, the easier for kiddos to move into remediation and then quickly back out of remediation from special ed. And so, what Mrs. Bush has done is collaborated with us on the special ed side of things with this comprehensive sort of literacy programming, which includes the foundations, the G O's, this Fun Hub, and then the more extensive piece, which is that Wilson reading system that I've talked about previously, that Orton-Gillingham-based, um, very, very intensive, uh, programming that we use for some of our special education students. So, now, we're using a comprehensive approach where we're not pulling and piecemealing things together that have different languages of instruction that can confuse kids. So, now, it all makes a whole lot more sense for kids and teachers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Becky, just for clarity, you were using this last year, correct?
Yes.
And so, the best way for us to get one-to-one data to make sure that our programs we're currently using are working would be to have them as closely matched as possible from year to year?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Feig?
Yes, it was budgeted.
Thank you.
And can you just clarify, we had it for free for two years, is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
Thanks for the information.
You're welcome.
If he didn't ask it, I would have. Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached Title One Letter of Agreement between Exeter Township School District and the Burks County Intermediate Unit. Upon agreement to this contract, the Burks County Intermediate Unit will provide Title One equitable services to the identified non-public schools listed in the agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That is attached.
I just have a question about that as well. Um, you know, many of the, um, schools that are listed on this, uh, agreement are outside of the, of Exeter. So, are we approving all of these or just the ones that we're responsible for?
That, I actually am not hundred percent certain. I, I can get back to you on that.
It's the ones we're responsible for, so schools that we're actually sending our kids to.
Yes.
Exeter students, so.
Just the ones with quantities listed?
Okay.
Okay, so the first page of that document, essentially, or the second page, I guess it is, really doesn't really apply to what we're, what we're voting on. It's the second page that,
Correct.
or the third page that, uh, references the.
You know.
Yeah, the I U has a master agreement, and by law, with Title One, you have to have somebody set up aside.
Yeah.
Non-publics. You don't have to use it all, but you have to have it set aside in agreement with.
We're not approving any county-wide action. We're just approving those.
Just Exeter's action.
Okay.
No, and there's a, a lot of, uh, Dr. Hwa did extensive work with this, uh, the non-pub schools, so he had to contact each one, track to see what students of ours that they possibly had. Did they qualify for this? Then look at the amount, um, and schedule, he scheduled meetings with each of the schools where we actually did have students to find out what their needs are, and then we're responsible for tracking that information and submitting it.
Do we keep track of those kids? I mean, do we know who they are and how many of them there are and what grade levels they're in? Or do we just kind of assume that what they provide for us is, uh?
So, I believe that Dr. Hwa is actually tracking that, um, tracking the, the names of the students and, and grades, some of that he has to for auditing purposes. But the purpose of the agreement is because much of it is managed by the I U for other services.
Thank you.
And I could be wrong, but under appendix, he has all the services, like, listed for each school. Dr. Hamburger, um, and then evidence needed, et cetera, so. Cause I was looking for that as well. Okay, yeah, you see what I'm, yeah, where he, yeah. Okay, I apologize. If that's all for that. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between New Story and the Exeter Township School District to provide special education services for student eight-six-one-two-three-two-four. Okay, may I stop there and ask a question? Why do they all end in two-three-two-four? Is that the school year or?
I'm gonna say twenty-three, twenty-four school years, probably.
Is that for, okay, I apologize. I just always wondered that.
They come up with a series of numbers, so.
It just seems like they all end in, then I didn't know if that was the school year. Okay. Apologize. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, at a cost of four hundred and twenty-five dollars per day for a total of seventy-six thousand, nine hundred dollars.
That's a renewal for a student who's already in that placement.
Thank you. Moving on, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between the Vista School and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for students eight-six-two-two-three-two-four and eight-six-three-two-three-two-four for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at the annual tuition rate of sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents per student.
That is also a renewal for those two students.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a contract between Keppley Behavioral Consulting, Inc. and the Exeter Township School District to provide additional behavioral support to a student for up to four hours per month at a rate of one hundred dollars per hour for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Is this for a specific student? I noticed there's not a number associated with it. Or is this just for general purposes of providing services to any student?
This is for a specific student, and this is a ongoing contract that we've had, so this is a renewal as well.
Is the student already receiving behavioral, uh, support now in addition to this?
No, this, well.
Or would this be a change?
This is not a change for the student.
Not a change.
Correct.
This is a renewal.
This is a renewal, yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, when I look at H, I'm just going to combine my question for H and I, right? And maybe it's just an I question, not an H question. You know, I, I often see these things, and, and I've asked this before. Do we provide these services internally and we don't have? Do we provide these services internally and we don't have the support right now to provide enough of these services? Or are these, when I, I see things like board certified, I wonder if they're services we don't provide and so we're required to. A little more explanation.
That's more of a question for I. H is a very specific student scenario.
I won't ask it again, though. We'll just take it for I.
Okay, so for I, yes, so for I, we don't have any registered behavior technicians employed by the district. If you recall, those are paraprofessional positions that have additional certification and training regarding behavioral supports. And so we access that service when we need it through an agency. We've used this particular agency in the past. You might remember it on previous agendas called Chance Light. Um, but they recently changed their name and now I'm not even sure if I'm saying it correctly. It's either, it might be surpassed. Um, so that's a particular, uh, service that we don't offer here in the district that we contract out for.
Thank you. I'll save my follow-up question when we get to it.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a contract agreement between Surpass Behavioral Health of Pennsylvania and the Exeter Township School District for services for students for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a cost of a hundred and twenty dollars per hour for board certified behavioral analyst services. Sixty dollars per hour for registered behavior technician services and eighty dollars per hour for program support specialists.
So my follow-up question. And I've asked this before of you guys on different situations. My ask as a board member would be, as we get these services, if you fear that they're, if you feel that they're being used more frequently to the point that the board has to look at creating a position with someone that has these certifications and that makes sense for the district. I would hope that you guys would just bring it to our attention.
We, we certainly would. One of the challenges with this position is the same challenge that we have in currently filling our typical special education paraprofessional positions. Is actually finding people to do the work, so.
And finally, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between Conrad Weiser School District and the Exeter Township School District to provide special education services for student six, eight, five, two, three, two, four for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a cost of two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-three cents per day. For a total of forty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents.
And one last time, this is a renewal.
Okay. Yep. Okay, that's everything for the Education Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Batler. Next on the agenda is Athletics and Extracurricular. Don't.
No, we're not usually on the cow, but I'll have something to report next time.
Awesome, thank you. So then we'll go to Finance Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Mout.
Thank you, Dr. Hearing. Uh, the, the only item I have on my agenda is for the, uh, real estate discussion. It's recommended that Board of School Directors discuss the option to, uh, sell the parcel of property. Um, uh, this is the property across from the Ritz School. Uh, just, uh, kind of rehashing a, a little bit from earlier this year. The board had approved, uh, the administration to work on, uh, putting that property out to bid. Uh, it's roughly a little over five acres. And, uh, we had not received, uh, any credible bids come in, um, to administration and ultimately this dis- discussion is, uh, to figure out what we want to do next. So the options roughly on the table are do nothing and keep the property, uh, for now. Or, uh, the other option that was discussed was potentially, um, working through a Realtor or a realty company to, to list the land.
Just a reminder too that we can't access it off of Dunham. Um, the access is on Grant.
Correct.
Street for this property.
As a Grant Street address, it's actually at the dead end of Grant.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is a single access street, um, there's Grant Street. And then actually, uh, off of Grant a little bit, there's a, another cul-de-sac, I think, I believe it's called Wood, uh, Woodcroft. Um, but yeah, there's a, there's about, uh, roughly twenty-five homes within the single access street that's back there. Maybe we could interest Starbucks since we have only three Starbucks in the community. Idea. I'd actually, uh, welcome another Starbucks right near the school there. Be fantastic.
I recommend we just drop it. Cause we have discussed use of that particular plot of land in the past for administration building, but then we moved into here. Uh, when we moved in here, the, uh, agreement was no major modifications would be made to this building. That would preclude repurposing it as a school. Uh, if that should ever become necessary, we could, uh, put the administration building over there. It also could be used for, uh, field maintenance building if necessary. There's a, there's a lot of ways that we can use five acres. And we're, if we're talking about selling it for less than a hundred, we're really not talking any money. Which would cost more to buy additional land if we had to purchase such land.
I had, I have to agree. I, I don't think it is necessary for us to rush to sell. I don't necessarily feel that, um, you know, we, we wanna give it away. You know, if, if we are gonna sell it now, it appears that we're not gonna get, you know, what we would hope to get for a property like that. That would, uh, help us out, let's say financially in some manner, so. Uh, but I do know that there are some expenses associated with maintaining it, mowing it, keeping it, uh, uh, clear. And, uh, obviously any liability issues associated with anyone who would trans, you know, uh, crosses the land. But, uh, I would be inclined to follow what Bob's saying is at this point right now. You never know what, uh, what its use may be in the future. And having that access to that land may have some benefit in the future.
I tend to agree with Mr. Quinner. I don't see any reason to give it away. Um, I think if we had gotten bids on it and we thought it was a good option, it would be one thing. But it looks like our options now are to decrease its value, which could bring it under the current market value. It probably already is. So I would say we just keep it and see what happens in the future. We can always revisit it, right? We can do this at any time.
Yeah, I, I think initially the, what the hope was when we discussed this earlier this year was that, uh, the potential for, uh, additional housing development there. Um, obviously the housing market is a little bit different, uh, than, than what it was then. And obviously with no bids coming in, um, for that property, it's definitely not as attractive as, as it was when we first looked at this. So I, uh, from my end, I'm perfectly fine with just sitting on it and coasting for a little bit. Just like Mr., uh, sorry, Dr. Hamburger said, I, I, I don't think we're in a rush to sell it.
Will you be taking your chair up to that land then, if you're gonna sit on it?
I, I will be, yes. This defunct chair that I'm sitting on.
I, I just had a question too, you know, whether or not there would be any benefit in, in, in a passive effort on our part to just. You know, even if you had a sign on the property that, you know, said property available for sale, contact X. You know, so-and-so for, if interested, I mean, something like that. I wonder, you know, there's no effort to do that. Uh, you never know, you have hundreds of people daily who drive by that property and see it. Um, it may, it may evoke some interest, so just a thought.
I can provide you with a sign.
Ju- just to be clear though, I, I am going to cut down on the maintenance to, you know, once the grass gets ten inches high, cut it back down. But I'm not gonna keep it as a, a lawn anymore, if, if that's all right. Cause right now it's just being used as a dog walking and every time we run our mowers through there, they come next. And I'm like, dog poop, cause no one cleans up because it's not really a park. It's not a, the kids don't use it. So I'm just gonna let the grass grow to the height that we have to cut it before the, it's a weed ordinance.
I was gonna say, as long as it falls within an ordinance where we're okay and.
Yeah.
It's not considered.
So probably, you know, depending on the rain, but, you know, once it gets a certain height, we'll just cut it back down. All right.
No objections from me. All right, any other discussion? All right, Dr. Hearing, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you. And just to confirm, that was just a discussion, nothing's being moved forward for that. We're just leaving the property as is with the sign on it that we put on.
Co- correct. I, I, yeah, I think, um, the only difference is if, if we wanna put a sign on it. I don't know, uh, maybe the counselor's opinion here if that would, should, should get a board vote to, to do that. The original motion that was approved earlier this year was just to solicit bids.
And we did, uh, we had two separate options or, or bid. Um, and they all lasted, I think it was a total of four weeks. And all four weeks, we had signs of the property that was available for public option, you know, bids due by a certain date.
Yeah, it sounds to me as if the previous board action would allow us to proceed without further action.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mout. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Dr. Hearing. Um, we're gonna focus on, uh, the policies for first reading. Uh, we have policy zero, zero, six, which has to do with our board meetings. Uh, and then two sixteen and two twenty-one have to do with, uh, student discipline and dress and grooming. And then eight, ten is transportation. So there's been some minor changes to some of these policies. And I'm gonna let, uh, Mrs. Harris kinda walk us through what those changes look like and respond to any questions she may have.
Will do, Dr. Hamburger. I'm also wondering if you're just gonna come back as a guest speaker after December and talk a little about policies and.
I can come back and complain from right over there.
Uh, so as Dr. Hamburger said, we have four policies up. Uh, you might be having a little deja vu because we did just do policy zero, zero, six, and then they came out with a revision. So that's why you see that here again. The revisions to that policy are mainly under the voting section, specifically the provision, um, regarding the actions that require an affirmative vote of two-thirds of those voting in the presence of a quorum. That's been removed and both, uh, items previously under that category, incurring temporary debt and adopting or changing textbook without the recommendation of the superintendent. They're now categorized under actions requiring the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the full membership of the board. Um, and then under the provision, actions requiring the affirmative votes of a majority of the full membership of the board. The statement regarding combining or reorganizing into a larger district has been removed, which I don't think you guys have to worry about anyway. Um, and the other following statements have been added to that section, approving or denying a charter school application. Multiple charter school applications or establishing joint schools. Again, nothing that would apply to Exeter in the immediate future. And then, uh, policy two sixteen point one, supplemental discipline records. This is one of those changes that actually governs what another agency is required to report to us. Um, and it's regarding juvenile probation, so there's now a requirement for them to provide notice and to provide certain information in that notice. Having said that, that's already a practice. It's now just codified here. So that's a practice that's already been happening, at least here in Berks County. I don't know what it's like in other counties. Then two twenty-one, dress and grooming. Uh, there's, uh, information added in here regarding students who are experiencing educational instability. Again, as I mentioned in previous meetings, you'll hear me updating quite a few policies with reference to that. And with this particular policy, it's just to give grace and be thoughtful about students who may be experiencing educational instability and the clothing that they may have access to, to be able to wear. Uh, and then policy eight, ten, transportation. The update is simply an additional citation. That's those numbers in the brackets that reference new school code, new regulations, new laws. And there's an update again referencing, um, the new, um, regulations around students experiencing educational instability. That's it, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Mrs. Harris. Um, are there any questions, uh, from board members in regard to those policies that are due for first reading and as well as any of the other that are on the agenda for, uh, second reading? Which we've, um, discussed at our previous committee hall. So if not, that's, that concludes our, our report and our, our, um, recommendation would be to include those on the board agenda for first and second readings.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Next on the agenda, at the voting meeting, we will be recommending that the board vote for the following candidates for PSBA officers. Uh, twenty twenty-four President-elect Allison Mathis, twenty twenty-four Vice President Sabrina Becker, twenty-four, twenty-six PSB Treasurer Karen Beckpulley, twenty-four, twenty-six Western Zone Representative Marsha Pletta, twenty-four, twenty-five Section W three Advisor Eric Meredith, as well as the PSB Insurance Treasury, I'm sorry, trustee. Marion Neal and Michael Fasenetto. And the Forum Steering, Forum Steering Committee will be, uh, nominated, voted on by the Board Secretary. And there are four listed there. Okay.
Is the board given one vote for the entire board or is it nine individual votes? How does that work?
Normally you just call one vote for each person, but you vote as a, a whole. You vote as a district, so it has to at least be, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately if, if we, if we get five votes in favor, then that would, the board would vote. Would make that recommendation.
Motion fails at zero votes, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's either zero votes or one.
Since you don't have multiple candidates.
Right, so it's either zero votes or one vote.
Right.
I mean, we could try this out next voting meeting, see what happens.
You could break them down. You could do the whole platform or just one at a time. It's up to you.
Okay, next is public comments. No one has signed up. So we are going to be moving forward the following items to the September nineteenth voting meeting. The meeting minutes. Item three A, three C, three D, three E, three F, three G, three H, three I, three J, and item six A. And item seven A. At this point, are there any board members that would like to be heard?
Uh, I, I did have a couple of things. I just wanted to, uh, mainly ask administration about if, if that's okay. Um, the, one thing that, um, came up on my radar was just, I'm wondering if somebody could give the status of the playground equipment that's behind the admin building here and the, uh, the cleanup, uh, community park if that's occurred.
Uh, the community park, I know the township was down there, uh, they leveled out the park, uh, cut up the wood that was down there. Uh, you know, it's not grass grown because it's mostly stones and whatever else, but it's pretty well leveled. The, uh, pathway to the, the bridge is there. The bridge did survive. Uh, the steps up to it were solid, but the footing underneath had to be replaced underneath there. But, uh, it's still in good shape.
Okay.
Um, I doubt if we got plant grass down there because it's, it's pretty much just river rock, river stones through the whole area now.
Okay.
But they did level it out.
Okay, good.
Uh, playground equipment, we're taking the broken pieces down. It's been about the third time that we've put it back up.
Yeah.
Um, I know we're trying to see if we have better chains or something like that.
Is, i- is it vandalism? Is that what we're suspecting is happening?
Yeah, in fact, I think I, I, I saw it out the Jennifer's window and she's, she pulled it right up on Facebook from the night before. The, uh, I guess the soccer parents said everything was there when they left eight o'clock and next morning they were down. And it's all three pieces are broken down at once. We've had one or two pieces broken before, but.
Yeah.
They're basically, uh, uh, like a bouncy thing on a chain.
Yep, yeah.
They broke, they snapped the, uh.
Yeah, somebody's purposely taking it down.
Repaired it before with, you know, uh, filler pieces, but I guess that's not working.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I know it's, uh, it's a shame. Even with the old playground that was down with Happy Landings, there was issues with the bathrooms and vandalism and everything down there. And it seems like it's occurring, you know, up here at this playground.
Sure wasn't little kids because it was that night that it happened.
Yeah.
And just to add to that, uh, that is not a project that we have slated in, um, the projects that we presented to the Board for replacement.
Yeah.
Since this is no longer a school.
And, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I also really wanna say, I do believe Eric did file a police report for us.
Okay, thank you.
He's shaking his head, yes.
Thank you. Um, the, the other, uh, question I had, I had a resident that reached out to me actually today uh, to bring up, um, the, uh, I, I, some, some frequent, uh, rumblings about the per capita tax delinquency, uh, collection, um, items that have been getting mailed to residents. And I'm just trying to understand. So we, we approved statewide recovery services, uh, last year in, in February to, uh, to go after any um, delinquent uh, per capita tax bills. Do we um, are they getting that list of delinquency or delinquent accounts, are they getting that from the tax collector? Are they getting that from the district?
Well, first the tax collector turns it over to us, we review it and then we turn it over to statewide.
Okay.
And I think uh, in February or March, the board approves that, that the like, won't list be turned over. Uh, I know I've gotten some calls too and the per capita, I think there's a misunderstanding, they think that because they're homeowners, they're the ones to get that, but the per capita also goes to renters and apartment buildings.
Right.
Uh, you know, the tax collector gets lists from Realtors when people move in. Uh, the apartments buildings are also supposed to give list of, of new tenants, so it's not strictly homeowners. And we, we, it's about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year we receive per capita. And when we talk in ten dollars per person, that's a lot more than our twenty-two thousand residents that are homeowners.
The um, with um, with statewide, are there, are they more aggressive in the collections than our per capita collections agency was? It just, it, the reason I'm asking, it just seems like it's, the noise from that is a lot louder than in previous years.
Uh, no, they're not more aggressive, they did it the previous year, it was four years ago we switched from the other company to statewide, so it's, yeah, it's, I, I think it's just people are, you know, hate to say it, you call it a nuisance tax, it's a small tax, but it's, how do you make up for it?
Right, so, and, and in that regard, if.
And plus the township did away with their portion.
Township, township did away with their portion, so i- in that regard, if the board um, would want to entertain eliminating the per capita tax for next budget year, when would that discussion need to take place?
Uh, once we start budget season, which is like two months away.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I know, right around the corner again.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, Dr. Hearing, I'd just like to add on to uh, comments that Dr. Haller made during our special voting meeting around transportation. I'd also like to personally thank and express my appreciation to the senior administration, bus administration or transport administration and all of our drivers for the work that they're doing, um. I think it's safe to say that at some point or another, we have all worked in a short-staffed environment and we know the pressure that goes on with that. I know that, that everybody is doing their absolute best to, to get our students the best possible transportation they can. I know personally that the safety concerns that have been brought up are dealt with and prioritized as fast as possible and they're continuing to work hard to provide the best possible solutions that we have, given the state that we have, making sure that everybody's safe, that that is not a concern. So again, just wanted to express my appreciation and again, as Dr. Haller said, please be patient, uh, you know, you're not being ignored and they are actively working to make everything better for everybody, so, thank you.
I just have a quick thank you to the uh, teachers from Jackson Wall for joining us tonight, hope it wasn't too long.
I, I, can we give them a round of applause?
Okay, yes, Mr. Worgen, thank you for what you said too, cause I agree one hundred percent. Um, if nothing else, following this meeting, the board will be meeting for an executive session regarding personnel matters. And our next board meeting will be our Tuesday, September nineteenth voting.